Item six, discuss and consider amendments to the Saks Economic Development Corporation bylaws. This came to us. I'm not sure what the date was. January nineteenth. Twenty twenty one. And so there was some information on this as far as any. Recommendations or any. Discussion that we might have on the EDC. Updates to any bylaws or any discussion we might want to have on that. So I would like to. Open this up. I think some information was sent to everyone on the. Nineteenth. The meeting was on nineteen twenty 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 one, and then there was some. Information sent out. So does anyone have any comments on? Any? Information or anything that they have? That has come forward since that meeting?
Well, bear, if it's okay, I'll start. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I know where we ended the last meeting. We were asking. For some clarification language on the bylaws. So I know that was included in part of our packet. And so Joe, I'm assuming. Did some redlining for us. So I think we have the the. The original copy and then the redline copy. Joe, did you touch your hand?
Yeah, that. That is my handiwork.
Okay, just want to just want to be clear. So I have had a chance to read it and, you know, I'm just going to summarize the gist of it is, is that. The city manager, if these bylaws were changed the way they're worded currently, the city manager would. In essence, be the executive director of the EDC going forward if the council ultimately were to change the bylaws to reflect what's in your packet. And, you know, my comment is I definitely support this. I think that. It's a good model to follow, you know, and I've never been a big believer that we should do something because just because other cities do it. But I do know a lot of cities that do use this model and have a great deal of success with it. And I go by memory here, I think the EDC has been around since ninety four or something like that. And they've always used the other models to where the the board is somewhat independent, if you will, even though the council always has. Ultimate approval, basically, on certain items, namely fiduciary. And so. You know, I don't have a whole lot to add than what I said last time, other than I think this is a good direction for us to go. And obviously, if you read the way the bylaws are proposed, the city manager would be the executive director. If she, in this case, if she chose to hire someone else to do that for her, she would have that ability. I also support that. And whether it's her or whoever she might hire in the future, I think she has a proven track record that would would do as well. So. With what was presented to packet, I definitely support the changes as written.
And just just to mention one thing that employee, if the city manager were to hire an executive director. They would then be an employee of the city as opposed of the corporation.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. And I guess the other thing I I know we've all read it, so I'm, you know, I'm not saying y'all didn't read it. The other main takeaway, I guess, is under section three. The president currently has that ability to hire and fire along with the board. And of course, obviously, that would be stricken. So. But again, the way it's worded, I would definitely support it.
Well, trust me, I wrote this this comment earlier before tonight's agenda item, though, but this was an example that I had for anti-volunteerism. It's a very subtle change, but it's a very wide sweeping change that we're proposing here. The EDC has been its own board. They've we've entrusted the volunteers to be able to hire the. Executive director to be able to monitor that person's progress, to be able to to give direction directly to that. We are changing this to be an advisory board. The the board can't be. Over the city manager and the council be over the city manager, from what I've heard explained. So it's we're really, I mean. It's this was presented in a very terrible manner, but I mean, we're really telling the president of the EDC. That he is not qualified to go and hire a replacement that we're taking that duty away. You know, I again, I understand the reasoning behind it everything, though, but again, this is not just this little subtle change. This is this is. Wide sweeping. This turns into an advisory board. Some of the comments I've heard from advisory boards. Members before we were talking about people wanting to volunteer for advisory boards. Sometimes the the biggest comment I hear is what's the point? Council's just going to make the decision anyway. Why am I even here? And that's my thoughts on it.
Well, I would respond to a couple of those items. One is that, you know, at least it's not my opinion that we're not saying these, in this cases, that he. Qualified or not. I think it's the EDC function of the EDC, in my opinion, is better served. With the staff person that has experience with the EDC. You mentioned yourself, they're all volunteers and we always appreciate our volunteers. I think if you're volunteering on that board, I think you can serve the same purpose, whether there's an executive director that's a city employee. Or one that's not. So I don't think that affects our volunteerism at all. I know we can disagree on that, and that's fine. I just don't see it that way. And you're correct. It's 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 not a minor change. I certainly hadn't presented it that way. I think it definitely would change the fundamental. Nature of the board. You know, and the other thing I would say is that. I, you know, I don't know that I'm comfortable anymore with. You know, all of volunteer board making hiring and firing decisions for executives. I think most of them would tell you that they they're not all experienced in the EDC. They don't do that for a living. And not that that's a qualification for any of our boards, but the rest of our boards don't have the ability to hire and fire the the director, basically. So I, you know, I think that's a burden that maybe an all volunteer board shouldn't have. That's not the only reason, obviously. I. My main emphasis is to say, hey, I think we're better served. With someone that has experience in EDC and to lead that board. And we've had someone that had experience in EDC before. There's no doubt about that. But I think this model works other places. And as I said, I don't like to do things just because someone else is doing it. But I do think the model works, and I think we should try it here.
Well, one of the comments I had was. One of my biggest struggles was hiring a city manager. I don't hire CEOs. In the army, I had twenty two people that worked for me. I didn't hire any of them. Uncle Sam did, so I didn't have to worry about that. But my biggest struggle was hiring a city manager. Why? And I'll try to say this as nice as I can. Why the heck does anybody want me hiring a city manager? I don't do that. I don't have expertise. And that was one of my biggest struggles. Just just with the lack of knowledge and the lack of experience, obviously. I would say that the EDC is in a similar boat that I am. They're a volunteer group. I think the majority of them don't have that expertise and that those qualifications. Some of them probably do. Some of them probably regular hire and fire people. I don't, and I would think the majority of the board probably doesn't, especially at this level. I would imagine, as all of us, we're not hiring or firing CEOs either. So. To to give that. Responsibility to the board when I think that we have. A person who has many years of experience doing that. And many years of connections and knowing people. I don't think I need a CEO in that position. I think that money can be well spent. I think the primary function. Of the EDC is to incentivize the businesses, whether to stay here. To relocate here or just to do better in the community. And I think that money can be well spent, whether you want to call it a manager, whether you want to call it a director, whether you want to call it a project manager. I don't know what the title is. But I think a different position and certainly a different salary level could manage the EDC. Process and day to day. Now, do we need? The board to discuss projects or discuss businesses or strategies? Absolutely. That's what the board is for. And Mr. Lindsay to say that this discourages volunteerism. I don't agree with that comment either. I'm sure there's some validity to it. I just don't agree. Because I would say the same thing with the park board. That's asking the park board. To in fact hire the park parks and recs director. I mean, that's that's what I equate it to. I know it's not the same. It's a different entity. I'm not splitting hairs. I'm just, that's what I related to. So. I would say that several, if not most of our EDC board members. Were appointed to that board not understanding that they were they had that power. I know one or two of them personally told me that, that they didn't realize. And taking it away from them is not a deal breaker for them. They like the and the word that that I keep hearing is autonomy. That they want to do that themselves and have that responsibility. But the the course, the last twelve years I've been involved, it hasn't worked. And you look around at some of our neighboring cities, and there's things happening that directly involve EDC. And those things, in my opinion, just haven't happened yet. So do we hire a firm or excuse me, does the EDC board hire a firm, hire a contractor to go out and find that person? Is that the right answer? I still don't think it's the right answer. That position is not the right answer for me. So. I just think there's a better use of those funds and a better way to manage this board, whether we. Leave them some, if not most or none of those decision makings. I don't know the answer to that. I just know that what has happened hasn't worked out well. And something needs to change and something fundamental in this process needs to change, not just a person sitting in a chair. I do think one of the biggest problems is the lack of communication between EDC board members and city council members. One thing I've heard from a couple of people is, well, city council. Man, city councilwoman hasn't called me and told me that they're not happy. Well, their phone rings both ways. And I have heard from two people. But not the rest. And I think that I have a pretty. Good understanding of or openness about this, about talking about anything. I may not give off that that vibe. I don't know, but I think that I would hope that any of them would would talk to me or call me. And only two of them have. So it's a two way street. One thing I would like to go to see out of this is more regular scheduled meetings between us, whether it be quarterly. Biannually, annually, whatever that is. And I know if I'm getting too far off subject, Joe, let me know, but I just think fundamentally, we need to change this process. I don't want. EDC board members to resign over this. I think they're they are. I think. Whatever happened, whether it be. Council had to had to raise this subject or broach this subject to say, oh, yeah, okay, I guess this hasn't worked. Well. Whatever's happened, happened to this point. It's got to this point. It hasn't been working for me. It has been working for twelve years for me, to be honest. It's not something recent. So. I don't know if I cleared anything up. I just wanted to voice my opinion and say that something fundamentally needs to change in the process and whatever it is. We need to address it.
I think I would agree with most of what Councilman Franks. Brought up and I and I had this conversation with the president of the EDC board that. What I've seen in the last few years, you know, I was on EDC for about six months before I was elected to council. And that. My kind of take is that may I that I feel like some of our issues with EDC and maybe the lack of. Progress on EDC was a more of a structural failing. And the way we have it set up with a volunteer board hiring. And managing a director that there was a structural issue, having a team of volunteers be directly responsible for. Someone you want that many that level of results out of is a kind of a. An unfair lift that you're asking of a team of volunteers. When we had. Maybe a potential HR issue at, you know, with EDC. I was kind of horrified to learn that they're not under city HR. And all the liability that came with that and having this pulled under as that director to be a city employee. I think removes a potential liability there that I didn't even realize we had until. You know. Until there was an issue or potentially could have been an issue. And then it was like, oh, I never thought about that. And what my hus- I was talking. Not anything specific, but I said something to my husband about, you know, that. The board and the director of the EDC not being under HR and that ultimately that board would have to decide any sort of personnel issues. He said, well, if I was on EDC board as an unpaid volunteer, I would be really pissed off if I was expected to take care of HR issues. He said, that's just not a fair ask for people that are volunteering their time. So you're volunteering your time to. To help and to try to make this a better place. You're not necessarily volunteering your time to deal with, you know, personnel issues that, you know, may or may not be. In your wheelhouse or that you have no interest in dealing with. And I had never considered it that way. I just kind of thought, well, this is the way it works. But I do think that there's a time for a structural change. As someone on council who's responsible for spending this tax money that's the EDC gathers wisely. I don't think I could honestly, with what we have right now. Justify it. To to residents. And I think without making a change. If I say we were doing something to address it, or I'm trying to do something to address it or to change it, let's give it some time to see if that works. I'm willing to say that, but to say, I'm just going to let the status quo go when we've had an awful long time of status quo that hasn't improved. I think it's a little unfair for the responsibility I've been given as a council member.
If I may address it a little bit. Yesterday, last evening, I was visiting with someone about some of these items on the red line and getting some opinions for tonight's meeting. And after some copies were brought up, I spent till about two o'clock in the morning trying to. Find where the liaison has been happening between the current. City council and the EDC. And like I say, until two o'clock in the morning, looking over the last six or seven months. Eight months of board minutes, I found that the liaison has not been happening. As this is a. On obligation for the city council to have oversight over EDC, and that hasn't been happening. So I don't know why that hasn't been, because I do know that the city count that the EDC has asked for a joint meeting with. EDC and the city council, and it wasn't ever done. So we haven't been doing a proper right of liaison, and I think. That has created lots of problems to the point that some people have given up confidence that they. Actually, the city council really cares about what's happening with EDC. And this red line, looking at the red line. Attention doesn't make a lot of changes. It just means that the EDC does not get to hire their own executive director. Either the city manager becomes the executive director or she has the right to appoint one. But still, the EDC gets to vote on the money. And so there's lots of things in this whole concept here needs to be addressed other than just the red line. As an example. The president, the secretary and treasurer is will be appointed by the city. Manager and they will be employees of the city, which is a little bit different than that. But also it allows for a president and vice president as elected officers within the board. But it also states that one person can hold multiple positions. So one person can be both president and vice president at the same time. And that's not addressed in this red line, and that hasn't been brought up to the city council or anybody else. And these are things that are are more important. And to go along with some of this things. We realized if we read it. That the city, the the EDC can. Actually, not only. Go out and market the community to the community. They have the right to. Issue notes, mortgages, bonds, deeds of trust, trust agreements and negotiable or transferable instruments. And securities secured by mortgage of deed or trust or any other real property. And. That's fine, but it also states on the last of this document, it says. In case the EDC becomes insolvent, the city of Saks is obligated for that. Well, why hasn't that been brought up between a joint? Meeting between the city council and the EDC. I'm not sure not not everybody realizes that that is a. Possibility. So I think there's a gross lack of liaison between the two. And then the information was provided to some people this afternoon that throws light. In the whole thing. So I'm not so sure that we're going in the right direction, or maybe we're not going for enough in the direction. So I think there needs to be a joint meeting between the city council and the EDC before any of this takes place. And. So. That way we will find out who has been doing what and who has not been doing what. And maybe we can find out why they have not been doing what. And I would like to, in fact, matter, I'm going to make a motion. I'm making a motion now. That this be put on hold until after a joint meeting between the city council and DDC. To see if we can't get some collaborative agreement as to what the EDC's purpose is and how it's going to be operated and what the city. What our. Council is going to do as oversight and why we haven't been being enlightened as to what's happening at the EDC. As we should have been all the time. So I move that we. Postpone this and we will schedule a meeting between the city council and the EDC before we take this up for the consideration.
I have a motion by Councilman Millsap to postpone. Would we postpone or table, Joe? Or can that's what I'm going to do on this. I mean, either table.
Yeah, I would go ahead. And if you're usually when we table, the best action is to table to a date certain, since we don't necessarily have a date certain, we can just postpone this. If Mr. Millsap's okay with that postponing it until we have that joint meeting.
Right, okay. I have a motion by Councilman Millsap.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Councilman Lindsay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a little premature to make a motion until you hear all of council discuss. There's. At least one, maybe two that we haven't heard from. So I'll just throw my two cents.
We can we can. This is discussion time.
It is still open for discussion.
Mayor and council, I do have some comments in the chat. If you would like me to read those. Comes from Teddy Kinzer. He says, has this been vetted through the EDC board and the council? Given this is not a minor change, it is appropriate to make this change right now without appropriate due diligence. We have just had a resignation of the EDC director with no questions asked and not now. And now, not even a week later, a change in the bylaws is being proposed. How does this look? And now the EDC board's capabilities and responsibilities are being questioned with no feedback or discussion. Did the board even know this was an issue? Where was the communication from stakeholders, council and city, that the board would know changes need to be looked at? It seems we are considering a change without appropriate due diligence. Not that this is a good or bad decision, but as being discussed to know the change will make the appropriate result. I believe this more of a leadership and communication issue, not just change the model and all will be well.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'm I'm one of those couple that haven't weighed in yet. I've just been sitting here listening. I started thinking about this issue. It was probably six months or so ago when I first heard the suggestion. And I wasn't too sure at that point. I started talking to a number of friends I had in other. Other council positions, other EDC positions, city management positions. And I was looking at it as an efficiency thing, you know, what's what's the most efficient way to operate? You know, an organization like an EDC, given our size, given our resources. And that was what was causing me to lean toward, you know, the EDC reporting under the city manager. Particularly this this particular city manager who has experience in EDC, but, you know. Much as I would love Gina to stay around forever and ever and ever, she may not be our city manager forever and ever and ever. So what we're talking about here is is going to be a long term change. So I'm mulling through my my mind, you know, what I think is going to be best long term. My feeling at this time is moving EDC under the city manager's position is a good long term position. Now, I don't have a schedule for that. I also when was considering this, wasn't counting on. Some recent activities. It was a lot cleaner in my mind back then. I don't know that we need to go in, you know, Councilman Millsap, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I don't think it's a bad idea to have. A joint meeting with EDC. But this is our call. I like I don't have a timetable on this, but in light of things that are going on around EDC right now. I hesitate to rush to a decision. Teddy's comment just now. Indicated that maybe the communication on this isn't as thorough as I thought. I've been talking to a lot of people and. This is this is my fault. I thought Teddy and I had even talked about this, but that's that's my failing. I don't want to rush into it. With the motion that's on the table right now. I'm going to hesitantly support it. Simply because I don't want to rush into things. I am comfortable with EDC. Reporting up under the city manager's department, but I don't think it has to happen tomorrow. That's my thought on.
Anyone else that has a comment? The. The makeup of the EDC. Was put. Through citizens' vote to create this organization. In the bylaws that they originally. Created. So we're we're using what they created today. They. Without a director, the city manager is the director. And that was thought of when the actual board was actually created. So it doesn't surprise me that that would be the place to go if you don't have a director, because. That was what was created in the bylaws originally. So there was that support for the city manager to step in and take that job. It is the it is the. The responsibility of the of the board. To distribute the funding in the best interest of our citizens and our city. I've heard different views on on all this and. For and we can just put it all on COVID right now. I have had nothing that I can recall come before the city council in the last year. From the EDC. Not one action. And we owe the citizens. Whether we have this or not, to go out there and try to communicate and make something happen. So I have just in the last year. We have not had an action item yet on any action that the EDC has taken. So I understand. Points of view that that we need to to. Try to make something happen if that's if that's what's going on here or whatever, you know, I just think that. But yes, we have not had a joint meeting. With EDC and we should, no matter what happens tonight, we should have a joint meeting. With them. And. The action they took the other night. We had no ideas at council what was going on. We didn't have a joint meeting before that. So I mean, I'm I'm willing to have a joint meeting. On whatever direction we go to that.
Isn't discuss, isn't doing an an action item on the EDC director on the EDC agenda for Thursday? They're moving on this on Thursday, right? Their agenda posted today, didn't they?
It is on the agenda, yes.
That Jeff, do you know your liaison?
I just saw the Gita posted today, so there is an item on that, yes.
And that would be part of my concern here is that that if we're going to move forward with this. The city manager needs to be involved in that hiring decision rather than the board. And so we've got a timing conflict here. I don't know if we can. Do anything to stop. I don't know if we can do anything to stop the board from spending money to hire someone else? Or does that have to ultimately come through us even if they decided on it? I don't, I don't know exactly how that would work.
From what I understand is the board is going to start making inroads into the process of hiring someone. They're not necessarily spending money, they're not planning to hire anyone at this point.
I heard they were looking to hire a search firm.
They were probably going to discuss one, but when you look at red line stuff here, right now, the current EDC board picks the executive director and under the red line, the city manager will become the executive director or we have a choice to, to appoint one. And whether she hires a search firm or just literally appoints one is not even discussed here. But when you read it, it says that the executive director is a non-voting member of it. And this is something that I think also needs to be addressed a whole lot more than just these red lines. Think about it, there's no limit here as how much money they can borrow or float bonds on that we may, the city council may get stuck with at some point in time. And when you think about it, the, there are seven members on that board. It takes a quorum, which is four, and it only takes the majority of those. So three people can obligate a lots of money that is more important to me than who picks the executive director. And this should have been done, or this should have been brought up with the liaison actions between the city board, the board and the city council, and it hasn't been done. So I think they feel like that they have been shunned by us, so they don't know whether they're going in the right direction or not. We haven't told them whether we feel like they've been going in the right direction or not because we haven't been made aware of what they are doing on a timely matter. That's the reason I think we need to have a board meeting with them, a joint meeting with them to, to try to work out some kind of coalition to where we either go this direction or go further this direction or we stay where we are. I'm not proposing either way. But I think it's time that we started, city council started getting involved in our job of being oversight to the economic development and give them some directions as to where we think they need to be going. We do have that authority. Way back when, when I think Guy Brown was here, all of a sudden, suddenly going on and all of a sudden the city council just fired everybody and appointed themselves to be the EDC. So we have the authority to do it, but we can't do it if we don't know what's going on. So I think we need to have a meeting with them to try to figure out what's going on. And that's the reason I'm putting this to a motion.
And just to add to just a little bit of what Mr. Millsap said there, the, the thing that I guess I struggle with most is, is I heard it earlier, I forgot from who though, but you know, picking up the telephone and calling and telling your EDC members what, what you want them to do or vice versa. I just, I don't know, that just, that statement just blows my mind as like back room, closed deal. We, we operate as a body, as a council. I, I don't feel it's appropriate for me to call any member of the EDC and tell them what I want them not to do or not to do. I, I think that what Mr. Millsap was just saying, we come together as a body, we say as a council, here's the things that we want you to focus on. Or we make, you know, ordinance, we adopt, you know, policies or whatever to, to make that. So for, for myself, I've never just felt to pick up the telephone and call somebody because to me it just feels inappropriate.
Any, anyone else? I mean, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like that you can see a direction that the council wants to go with this, but I also see that they want to discuss this with the EDC. So I don't know. I mean, anyone else on that?
All right, I have a motion to table this item in a second. Please cast your vote. Motion fail, I say motion fails with Franks, Biggerstaff, Felix and Howard voting no. We still have this item up for discussion?
Well, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I do think this is a change we should make. You know, it's, it's, it's a model that works and I, I believe it, so. But I'm starting to open to more discussion.
Does anyone feel it necessary possibly feel like that we should set up a joint meeting before this is finalized?
I think we need one before or after. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But it-
That was the motion that we just had in front of us.
No, the motion was just to table it.
What's table it until?
That was it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it was to table till after we set up a meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I was more voting to table it so we can discuss it tomorrow.
Letting for management.
Yes. I told you what time.
I think this has been going, go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Hey, I was just thinking about Frank's point about debt and borrowing money. All of that stuff would come before council before they could do it anyway, correct?
You're muted, Frank.
Oh, Joe is going to answer here.
Yeah, and that's correct. And what, what Councilman Millsap was citing in the bylaws, that is taken directly out of the local government code that specifically deals with type B corporations. So that, that is taken directly out of the statute.
Okay.
And Gina, you may want to chime in and I don't have it, I was looking for, I don't have it in front of me, but what is their spending? They have to come before you if they spend over what? Do you know?
Ten thousand.
I, I-
Ten thousand, ten thousand.
Ten thousand, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that answer there. If they did decide to incur a bond or, or other debt, would that need to go before council for approval?
Yeah, that would, that would come before you for approval, correct?
So to Councilman Millsap's point, so in essence, they, they, they can't spend, they can't obligate us for something that we wouldn't ultimately approve first. Is that correct, Joe?
Correct, and you've got the $10,000 limit in there.
Right, okay, so, so really that's not, that's, that's a moot point now because they can't do that by themselves.
Correct.
Okay.
You're muted, Frank.
All right, so we've had a couple of contradicting statements. Couple of members of EDC have said they're upset that, that members of council won't reach out to them and Councilman Lindsey says it's inappropriate to reach out to them. So we're getting a lot of back and forth and I, I don't want this turned into a blame game because that's what's been happening in my opinion recently.
And, and Councilmember two, we do, sorry, Councilmember Franks, I just wanted to mention, we do have, it is the bylaws that are before us on this agenda items. I don't want to get too far off on this discussion.
Yeah, so again, this is not a new issue for me. This has been going on for at least a year. There have been evaluations, there have been training suggested. In my opinion, the EDC board did not manage that situation well. One of the opinion, one of the conversations I had with one member was, you want members on that board because of their decision-making and abilities to be able to, to make that director or that position see things through. And I don't, I don't think that happened very well. I think the pressure from council, as we've been discussing this for several months, was brought up, was brought up two months ago. I could be wrong on that, but two months ago. I think that's what really pushed this item to this level. I don't think EDC would have done this on their own, in my opinion. Now, is that because of lack of communication on either side, lack of joint meetings? Probably that has a lot to do with it. But it, it just, it hasn't been a good situation. And I'll go back to my original point. My biggest struggle is hiring a city manager. I imagine that most of those people on that board do not hire that director or CEO. I think the director slash CEO position is highly overrated for that, for, for our EDC. I don't think it's necessary. I think it's a, I don't want to say an admin person, but a, a project manager or someone to manage the, the projects, maybe not the project manager is not the right title either. So I think someone with a lot of EDC experience would be a better person to hire that type of person rather than a group of volunteers that doesn't have the experience. Yes, they have experience on the board, but not hiring that type of person. So that's kind of where I'm at with that, I think.
Do we in fact know the really academic background of some of the people on the board, EDC board? Maybe somebody is specialist in marketing. EDC is a marketing process. So maybe they, we have adequate there if we could use them. But again, the liaison hasn't been happening and I think it should have been. And I think we're deficient, someone is deficient in, in that obligation that, that hasn't been being done. And I still think that before any of this action taken, we need to have a joint meeting. Also, even though anything over $10,000 has to be approved by the council, in essence, if you go back and think about when some of the projects were being done for the whole town, the way that I remember it being done, I wasn't on the city council at the time, was the city council would recess into executive session to discuss the recommendations of the EDC board and come back out, reconvene, and somebody would move that we accept the recommendations of the EDC board and would vote on it. And the citizens didn't know what was being bought or how much money was being spent unless they went and searched the records. Sure, it's available to them, but I think that is process that the city council has been totally void in, in not saying the recommendation by the EDC board was to buy this piece of property and spend this much money and make it open for discussion at that point in time. But it wasn't done that way. It was almost a, let's don't tell anybody and maybe they won't be complaining. And that's where some of the attitude has gotten from the community between the city council and the EDC board and the city citizens have lost confidence in what's going on because there hasn't been a liaison between the two and it should have been. And now we're in this position where someone has now, point blank, someone lost a job and someone's looking for a job now. And we're looking for a new EDC director because I feel like it's been a total lack of process by us. Us meaning the city council, which I'm one of you now or one of us now. So I have to blame myself too. And I think it's time that we readdress this. And I think again, it still needs to be done before this decision is made tonight.
Yeah, I do want to address some of that communication issues that I've heard tonight, being the liaison myself. And I guess the, the, the issue I would take is that there's, there's been plenty of communication over the years between council and EDC and this, through the liaison, of course, that's me. Now, it's not always, sorry, Joe, can I not go there?
Yeah, I'm going to interject because I just, I know it's getting late and it says on here to discuss and consider amendments to the Saks Economic Development Corporation bylaws and our, our conversations, unless I'm, it's late and I'm imagining this, our conversations are really going in many different directions as it relates strictly to the management of, of the development corporation, which is really needs to be posted differently so they know that, or the public knows that that's what we're discussing and not just the red line bylaws that are in the package. See, that's why you don't invite me to these meetings.
You're such a party pooper, man. Come on. No, well, I was going to wrap it up to a point, so let me, let me do that and you can scold me if I do it wrong. Is that, there has been plenty of communication and I only say that because that's the perception out there, that's certainly not the reality. Now, how you solve that in the future is that you have this model where there, there is no lack of communication because in this, with the red line, as Joe rightly pointed out, that you have the city manager in charge and guess who the city manager reports to? Ultimately, us. If you, if you have this so-called communication issue now, you won't have it in the future with this model, I promise. That'll, hopefully I tied it up legally for Joe.
Send me your bill.
Yeah, don't wait too long, but yes.
Anyone else? I'm just going to comment, again, I'll leave it on management because that's what the red line is. We're trying, trying to make something going forward happen with the EDC. Our whole goal here is to take the citizens that have voted this in and do what we can to the best of our ability with the money that they, that we collect for this sales tax. And if it takes changing something to try to make that happen, I support it. But I do believe that the results are there. The results are right there in front of me now. I have not seen anything come to the city council in the last year.
Mayor, I move that we approve item six as presented.
I have a motion to approve item six as presented by Councilman Biggerstaff.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman King. Any other discussion? Motion carries with Councilman Millsap voting no and Chance Lindsey, Councilman Lindsey abstaining.